So, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Cabinet this afternoon's cabinet meeting. Can we first of all take any apologies?
No apologies, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any declarations of interest? Gail?
Hi, thanks, Alan. Item 13, as a Director of Norwich North Building Limited, I have to declare a personal interest in this item. So I will need to leave the room and be put in the waiting room and then come back for the following item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other declarations of interest? Mike?
Yeah, the Norwich Regeneration Limited items, above and below the line. I'm a member of the board of Norwich Regeneration Limited, so it's a non pecuniary interest.
Non pecuniary interest, thank you, Mike. And Paul?
Yes, same thing, non pecuniary interest as regard to it.
Okay, thanks very much. Okay, can we then... We have no questions or petitions from the public. Can we therefore go on to the minutes? Am I able to sign these as a true record of the previous cabinet meeting? Yeah, thank you very much. Let's go on to item five, which starts on page 15. By way of very brief introduction, because I'm going to ask the Chief Executive to speak to this report. Council colleagues will remember that we debated a motion last autumn around Black Lives Matter and the issues of inequalities and so on, discrimination. So that's an important driver for us as politicians, but it's also an important priority, I know, by the Chief Executive and for the organisation. So I'm going to ask Stephen to introduce this report.
Thank you, thank you, Leader. I am pleased to bring this report to Cabinet this afternoon. Improving the diversity of the council's workforce across a range of characteristics, what can only be a good thing for the City Council. I'm really proud to see such good progress made on gender equality, a workforce which is 58% female with no gender pay gap, with two of the three executive director roles and five of the eight head of service roles in the council's new senior management team filled by women. But there are areas where we need to make further progress. One of those areas is the current under-representation of colleagues from a black Asian and other minority ethnic background. So as the report shows, just over 9% of the economically active population of Norwich are from a BAME background. This compares to only 3.4% of the council's current workforce. So for me, this is a problem because it means that the council as an organisation is not as representative as it should be of the community we serve. And I believe that increasing the diversity of the City Council is fundamental to our future success. Put simply, it will make us a better council. It will bring new perspectives. It will increase the richness of our thinking. It will generate new ideas and different ways of doing things. And it will help us develop a better understanding of the issues that affect our residents. So I can only see benefits as pursuing this agenda. And while it's not uncommon for local authorities and other parts of the public sector to have workforce diversity numbers which are out of step with the communities they serve, I am determined to make progress. This won't happen overnight. It will require a sustained effort across all parts of the organisation over the medium to long term, but it's important that incremental progress is made. I've also spoken to the Managing Director of Norwich City Services Limited, a new wholly owned company, to ensure that these ambitions are shared across the council and NCSL as part of a one-council approach. The Cabinet report provides a snapshot of some of the conscious actions we'll be taking to build a more inclusive workplace, with three themes identified as being crucial to our future strategy. Firstly, ensuring our recruitment practices and processes are designed to attract a diverse candidate pool. Secondly, building an inclusive workplace and creating a culture where people from all backgrounds feel valued and included. And thirdly, embedding effective workforce and succession planning to support retention and progression of talented colleagues. But for me, there's a crucial precursor to all of this, which is the need to take action to improve how people from a greater diversity of backgrounds view Norwich as a place to live and work and how they view the City Council as a prospective future employer. This means we'll need to identify opportunities to better connect with a greater diversity of people in the local community and more widely, so that we can increase the number of people who see the council as a potential career choice. Whilst there's action we can and will take to improve our HR processes, it won't mean much if we don't address the low numbers of people from a BAME background who are applying in the first place. We can't expect people to automatically come to us. We must do more to reach out to them, look beyond the usual channels in order to connect with those who might not immediately be attracted to or even be aware of a potential career at City Hall. Now, as we do this, we're really lucky to be able to benefit from a large number of partners in the community who can support this approach. So in terms of next steps, we'll develop a detailed action and resource plan, which will include priorities and timeframe for each actions. And we'll assess which actions will have the most impact in the short to medium term, so that we can target our approach accordingly. And then finally, although we've discussed and consulted on this emergent strategy with over 50 managers from across the council, we need to test our plans with external partners and crucially, with representatives from the communities we're trying to attract. Happy to take any questions.
Thanks very much, Stephen, and thanks for your leadership and the support of your colleagues in putting this framework before Cabinet this afternoon. So any comments from Cabinet colleagues? Karen?
Thank you, Alan. Thanks, Stephen, for this. I really appreciate this report. One of the things I think we do need to look at, which I can't see in the action plan specifically, is the qualifications required for people to come and work at the council. Quite often, we will ask for GCSE A-level degree or equivalent. It's very difficult for people to know whether or not their qualifications are the equivalent. So I think we need to be more flexible in the actual qualifications we're asking for, because we could actually be excluding people with significant knowledge and experiences.
Stephen?
That's a really good point. I agree with that, and that's something we can pick up in the next iteration of this. Thank you.
Yep. Any other Cabinet colleagues want to raise any questions? Dawn, would you have your hand up?
No, I didn't, Alan. Sorry, I've just turned my camera off. Apologies, I did need to put my hand up. Just to clarify in terms of Counselor Davis's point, under 13 of the action plan, it does talk about reviewing and rewriting job descriptions and person specifications, removing non-essential criteria, which is where we had intended picking up the review of qualifications for all posts. And that is something that we discussed with our senior managers, and they were all keen to look at as well. They identified the same issues, if that's helpful to clarify that.
Okay, thanks, Dawn. Any other Cabinet colleagues? Gail?
Just to say that I am very, very supportive of this paper and putting an action plan in place. And like Karen, having been involved in a number of interviews over the last three months, I think the qualification matter could well put people off. So we need to get that sorted as a priority, really.
Yep. And of course, from our own perspective as politicians, we have good gender balance. We have a good, I think, chronological profile across different age bands. But we are underrepresented in terms of BAME members, elected members of this council. And so it's incumbent all political parties on the City Council to address this issue as we go forward. And I think there are some very helpful ideas from the report that Stephen has presented to us this afternoon that may maybe help us with some criteria that can move that agenda forward. Jamie, did you have any points you wanted to make or a question?
Yeah, just to pick up on... First of all, thank you for bringing this report. Obviously, it's an important issue that we need to pick up on. Just picking up on what Stephen was saying about work with partners, I wanted to know a bit more about the... Is there a sort of consultation process for this strategy of the action plan? What's the ongoing consultation going to be, including with elected members?
Yeah, so that's being developed. As I said, we had a really good conversation with our wider senior management team a few weeks ago, over 50 managers involved. It's not lost on me, the fact that that group is not representative, as I say, of the communities we're trying to attract. I think we are... There are various routes through. I don't want to kind of name individual institutions, because I haven't spoken to them directly yet. But there are various organisations in the city who I think could usefully support us with this. And I think a number of organisations, both within the public, private, academic sector, who are also looking at this. And I think there is shared learning to be had. The obvious place to start would be our City Vision partnership. I'm keen to have a conversation with City Vision Partners on this, because I think this would be a shared agenda across the city.
Yeah. Thanks, Stephen. So are we happy to accept the recommendations of this report and taking this forward in a vigorous way? All put our hands up if we're supportive. So Lucy has a record, and it's live on camera. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item six, which is the Pay Policy Statement 2021/22. That's in my name as a portfolio holder. For those colleagues who've been on the council for a while, this is a policy that has to be ratified and it has to go to council for final approval. So the report is a product of the Localism Act 2011, requires, as I say, a resolution of the full council by the 31st of March. So it needs to go to our council meeting next week. Page 28 touches on the statement, the criteria around which the things, the elements that need to be included. And also, it's an opportunity for us to sort of update some of the changes in the structure, the staffing of the council. And we've had a significant process of reshaping some of the top areas of the council, heads of service and directors. And that's listed. And then there is a reference to pay claims. Myself and Dawn, who's Head of HR, will be attending a regional pay discussion next week. And I also sit on the employers' panel for the eastern region. So I'm not going to go through this in iterative detail. Page 33 outlines what's included in terms of the pay framework. There are exceptions to those who have terms and conditions and employment protection under 2P regulations, but this relates to joint council service grades and policies. And these are supplemented by some locally agreed collective agreements reached with the trade unions, which are recognised by the council. So I'm going to move us forward to page 37, which wants to pick out some distinctive features of our own arrangements here. So the grading is the lowest and highest paid employees. And I think the important statistic are the pay multiples in 5.2. So the ratio between the highest paid employee, which is the Chief Executive, and other employees based on a median earning in 2020 is a ratio of 1 to 4.74. And the ratio from highest to lowest is a ratio of 1 to 1.47. It's what I often quote, that the multiples between FTSE 250 companies, lowest earner and the highest earner is somewhere in the stratosphere and runs into multiples of figures like a ratio of 1 to 467 or something or more. That pay gap is very wide. The recommended framework for highest and lowest in local government is roughly a ratio of 1 to 12. This sits comfortably within that range. If we turn over the page, one thing we're all very proud of is the living wage. And we've had that for a number of years since we were fully accredited by the Living Wage Foundation. There is pay progression through increments. And there are provisions in relation to relocation, travel expenses and so on. But the thing I would note in particular is the fact that we do not operate bonus schemes or performance-related pay, but we do in 6.8 support people in their professional roles with support for studies and professional memberships of organisations, which of course enhances their abilities and their knowledge. And that's for the benefit of the capacity and expertise of the council, but ultimately for the benefit of our residents. If you turn over the page to 611, one of the things that we have been aware of is the very poor levels of statutory sick pay. We have very strong arrangements to ensure that people are supported financially during long periods of illness. And in terms of redundancy packages, there's a statutory redundancy package, but we have a redundancy package that is enhanced at a ratio of 1.5%. The local government pension scheme operates in the council, which guarantees people a predicted pension income when they retire. It's not left to the uncertainties or the vagaries of the market. And at the bottom of page 41, we act in line with the agency workers' workers directive to ensure that their rates of pay and reward are consistent with those of the directly employed workforce. And there are salary sacrifice arrangements, the childcare vouchers and cycle to work initiative on the gender pay gap. And Dawn may be able to dig into the detail on this, but I think Stephen already covered it. There is no gender pay gap overall within the council, which is a very important thing, given that there are, in many places, very distinct differences in the pay of female and male employees. So that's a bit of a whistle-stop tour of some of the salient points. Dawn, is there anything you'd want to add?
Apologies, struggling with my IT tonight. No, nothing to add to that, Counselor Waters.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from Cabinet colleagues? Yep, Karen and then Gail?
Yeah, thanks. This is a very good story. It's great that we're a living wage foundation employer. We have no gender pay gap, and we have a relatively small pay ratio. We don't have a policy on maintaining that ratio. And I wonder if that's something we could look at going forwards.
Okay, yeah, that's worthy of note. Minute that as an action to discuss further. Gail?
I mean, living wage is an obvious... You know, really, really proud to be associated with the council that pays the living wage and has encouraged so many other people to do that as well. Really pleased that we don't have a bonus and performance-related pay scheme. They can be incredibly divisive. And I'd just like to say that, you know, this is very black and white in figures, but our staff have done a tremendous job during this pandemic, and it doesn't really show how committed they've been and how so many people have gone beyond their pay grade to work for the people of Norwich.
That's a really well-made point, and thank you for making it, Gail. We all endorse that. Any other Cabinet colleagues on this? Jamie, did you want to ask a question?
Yeah, it's partly the travel allowance. So the council offers compensation to staff who drive for work and in some cases, offers free parking for staff who drive to City Hall for evening meetings. And I just want to ask if we have a similar compensation for people who don't drive but who take public transport, for example, if they have to travel long distances or for evening meetings. And particularly bearing in mind the City Council's response to the local transport plan from the county council recently, where we proposed quite an ambitious suite of measures to reduce car use and maybe looking at applying those same measures here.
Yeah, yeah. Good question. Dawn?
Thank you, Commissioner Osborne. Actually, anyone that kind of incurs additional expense for business-related travel will have that reimbursed. So anyone that uses kind of public transport will be reimbursed for anything that's kind of business mileage-related. In addition to that, we have pool bikes that we provide training on and encourage officers to use pool bikes. We also run a cycle-to-work scheme to encourage kind of cycle use and for people that use their own cycles to work, but not commissioned through the cycle-to-work scheme. We also reimburse them the mileage line with what we pay for car use. So we do try very much to kind of encourage alternatives to car use.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dawn. So are we in a position to recommend this pay policy statement to full council next week? I'd like to indicate if you agree with the recommendations and the pay policy. Thank you very much. Okay, let's go on to item seven, which is the Corporate Performance and Risk Report, Quarter Three, 2021. So there's two elements to this, where, as you probably recall, we are particularly keen to focus and strengthen our risk register. So there's some new elements to that part of the report. So let's dive into some of the detail. Colleagues will be familiar with the framework and the criteria. They'll also be aware that if people want the granular information about the performance data, that is the link in paragraph five, which I'm sure people could spend a fruitful evening drilling down into that. So there's an opportunity. So let's just remind ourselves that performance has been affected by the impact of COVID in a number of key areas. We've had colleagues who have been reassigned to new responsibilities and new duties, particularly in relation to COVID, limiting the spread of the infection, keeping people safe, providing advice to individuals and to businesses, and ensuring that most vulnerable people in our communities are kept safe. And as you will recall from the previous report for performance, that this needs to sit alongside our COVID recovery plan. And we've had an update on that in December. So that's the sort of framework within which we are in context, within which we are working. If you turn over to page 46 from paragraph eight, we're looking at a challenging time and a number of outcomes. There are many positive outcomes that are listed, as well as a number of challenges in terms of ensuring that we have to take account of some of the limitations imposed on us by COVID. There's some very heartwarming stories in terms of the digital inclusion strategy or project. Again, some of the engagement was a little limited at one particular point in time. But providing people with the tools for the job, smartphones and so on, to a group of eligible people, that's been really very good. Helping people to master the delights of Zoom. And although we may be sometimes a little tired of Zoom or Teams since we spend a lot of time on it, the quotation in the penultimate sentence, before we get to paragraph 10, somebody saying, "One learner, it's been great as I could video-call my daughter and see my granddaughters. It made my day seeing them open their Christmas presents." So actually, the work being done in that area has been particularly important at a very personal level. Some areas which are problematic, levels of residential household waste. Just thinking about the amount of additional cardboard from door-to-door deliveries puts some pressure on that recycling. Clearly, because of the social distancing, community groups, volunteering and so on has been restricted, though, as we slowly release ourselves from lockdown. That, I think, will begin to escalate up again. Some issues around the private rented sector. Homes made safe is below target, but the explanation is around government policy, about not dealing with enforcement and not serving notices. And also, a number of the people in that team had to be relocated for related to COVID work. Counselor Jones may wish, Beth may wish to comment on that. So it is as it is, and I think every effort is made to meet the new pressures that Gail referred to at the end of the last report. And there's a finite resource, but we have used government funding to take on additional resource or fund near areas COVID-related support activity to help people through each stage of the pandemic. On page 49, there is a reference to the corporate risk register. And although our corporate risk register is, in the words that usually used for these things, robust, I think it's been good that there's been an opportunity taken to look at how that can be strengthened. So the corporate risk register will be reviewed each quarter by CLT. It will go to audit committee twice yearly, at the request of the Audit Committee Chair, so that can be looked at. And also, it is a responsibility of Cabinet. And also, it is a responsibility of Cabinet, so it will come here as well. Conceive starting on page fifty four, that there is the detail of that risk register and that there are some new risk register elements that have been introduced. And I'll just tell you what those are. Occurrence of a significant event. That references, among other things, impacts of climate change, one on antisocial behaviour and one relating to the governance of contract management. And there is a a fourth which is commercially sensitive. So that sits for the moment below the line. So I'm not going to go through each of these schedules, but only to say that I'm impressed by the 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 work that has been done to identify triggers, impact, mitigation and action to address risk related issues. And these are risky and challenging times, so it's a timely document. And then on page seventy one, you have the scoring metrics. So with those introductory remarks, have any any officer comments on this first of all? No. Cabinet colleagues. Beth and then Gail.
Thank you. And yeah, just to reiterate, you know, we're going to back to full strength with the private rented sector, and it continues to be such a priority for us. But also to highlight on the corporate risk register that, yeah, we do have the ending of an eviction ban coming. But to really highlight the excellent work done by our private sector, Tennessee Sport Officer. Really, really proactive approach. And I think we're, from looking at what other councils do, we're really leading the way in trying to prevent and mitigate the effects of Covid in terms of people losing their homes. If they're living within the private rented sector. So I think we can be confident in the standard of service we're providing for that.
Thanks very much, Beth. And yes, valuable, important work being done by that team. Gail.
Thank you, Alan. I just wanted to go back to page forty eight and the avoidable contact target hasn't been achieved this quarter. I just wanted to reassure people that we're working really hard on making forms and accessible for as many people as possible and easy to access and to to get results from. We've introduced a ring back system for people who telephone into City Hall because there will always be some people who need to telephone to contact us. And that has been very, very successful. So people don't have to wait forever listening to awful music on the phone and we will ring them back. And, you know, again, the the work the team has had to do throughout the on and off lockdowns of the last year, with sometimes only urgent repairs being able to be done. But, you know, again, the resilience they've shown in 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 continuing to to give as high service as they possibly can.
Thank you very much, Gail. Any other cabinet colleagues want to raise any points? Jamie, any any questions?
Yes, please. So clearly, the inclusion of the risk report on antisocial behaviour is very welcome. And I don't need to go on about how many times green councillors have have raised issues of antisocial behaviour at cabinets and at council and in other measures, other means. But my question is about the actions taken in in response to antisocial behaviour on the action plan that's listed there. And they mainly focus on the antisocial behaviour team, what was the abate team. And I'd like to ask whether there's there's also room to include physical changes to the environment around council estates, because that's something that's that comes up very regularly in casework for us. You know, security doors, lighting, CCTV. It's also something that the Safer Neighbourhoods Initiative has been looking at. I know that Louise, we spoke about this last week. So I wonder if that's something that can be included in the in the report.
Okay, Lou.
Thank you, councillor Osborne. As as part of the work that we're doing around the restructure of the antisocial behaviour team and its move across to housing and community services under the new council structure, we will be reviewing some of the processes and and methods. And as you know, we're going through a recruitment process to strengthen the team. So as part of that work, we will be looking at performance indicators and service standards. So we will review those and at some point we will come back to committee with with that information.
Any other comments from anybody? I mean, antisocial antisocial behaviour, of course, is a is an is an issue of concern for all councillors. Stephen.
Yeah, I just wanted to make an overarching comment really about, you know, clearly, the 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 report sets out a number of areas where Covid has had a big impact on on the council, not just the city council, but councils across the country. I think most acutely, it's in those areas of regulatory service. And there are a number of issues at play here which don't affect just the city council. They affect councils across the country. Firstly, there's a national shortage of suitably qualified, you know, regularly regulatory service officers. And that's something that we're all grappling with. And then secondly, the government actually wrote to all chief executives at the end of January, setting out a kind of prioritised list of activities, of regulatory services activities they wanted councils to focus on. And they were categorised A, B and C. Category A was essentially responding to Covid, you know, supporting businesses to check compliance. And we've been we've been targeting our resources kind of according as far as possible to that that framework that's come to us from central government. You know, in category B, which is kind of activities that are important. So please continue to deliver these activities wherever possible, recognising that activities in category A take precedent. Are things such as private rented sector enforcement, licensing, responding to noise and nuisance complaints. So I guess that just gives you a sense of the overarching, the framework the government's asking us to respond to and how we've had to target our resources over the last kind of twelve months. As we come out of Covid, clearly, we've got an action plan to improve this. But, you know, it's felt most acutely on some of those some of those regulatory services.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Stephen. And of course, we we very much hope that government, when it gets around to the comprehensive spending review in the autumn, acknowledges the need to to continue the range of work that you've described and much else besides. Because Covid and the consequences of Covid are going to be with us for a long time. And we need a strong, strongly resourced local government to be able to tackle some of those emerging issues as effectively as we've been dealing with the issues that faced us during the the height of the pandemic. Okay, so I'd like to I'd like to thank officers for this work. And in in particular around the the risk register, I thought it I thought it developed a clear logical narrative with appropriate actions and, you know, risk risk embedded in in our thinking in in all our different policy areas for the predictable and the unpredictable. Okay, so can we can we accept the recommendations of the report as listed on page forty three? Okay, thank you very much. Right, mercifully, item nine is not in my name, but in Gail's. Kitchens and bathrooms.
I think we've got I to make first, Alan.
Have we? Have I just missed? My papers move on from. Oh, hang on, yes, I know what you mean. Sorry, separate agenda. Just move on to my supplementary. Okay, sorry, you have got me. Right, item item eight is the above the line report on the Norwich regeneration limited business plan. And the recommendations as laid out, and these are based really on the the reports that came to to Cabinet and council last year in moving moving the programme of work forward for NRL. And basically, it's built around three different elements. The first of these is Throughscore Phase Three, the design feasibility for First Street and also the the direct provision of of housing by for the HRA. Just remind ourselves that the purposes of an LRM NRL from its inception was to to broaden the capacity of the council to be, in the fullest meaning of the word, a strategic housing provider. And of course, central to that has always been the building of 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 council homes. And so in relation to the 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 housing and its location, particularly in Bothor, we have forty nine HRA properties. There are plans for fifty eight council properties in Throughscore Phase Three. And, you know, across across both across both the sites, we've got a phase four, which will look at at least thirty percent housing. So when I'm talking about some of the other elements of housing, housing for build and for sale, that's just a reminder that across the piece, it's a sort of fifty, we're well in advance of the 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 proportion of of council homes, which generally is around thirty percent. But in this context, it's around fifty percent. So what this report demonstrates is is that there's been a number of improvements. First, in in the context of what's being built and and what's being sold. And in terms of the financial performance, that's outlined on page seven. And what we what we have is we have a story of of significant success. Houses built to good quality of a high environmental standard with all the benefits that spin off in terms of climate change, energy bills and the general environment. And and that's resulted in a, you know, series of sales which have have helped the company's financial position in term and also in terms of the dividend coming back to the council. We just need to remind ourselves that we're in in business for the long term. This is not something that and and that's been our tradition over a hundred years. You know, this this really is looking at a ten year plan going forward. And 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 the opportunity to demonstrate to the the council, which has provided the investment and the equity to to drive forward that house building programme, that those things, that that's a good investment. And and we've had significant empirical evidence to demonstrate that. There's also been a piece of work that's been done to 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 strengthen the expertise and the governance arrangements for NRL. Two new non executive directors to the board with a wealth of experience in 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 this sector have been included. We also have oversight with our own one five, one officer and other colleagues who are sitting in an observer capacity on on the board. And we are drawing on, in a fairly uncertain time, getting expert insights into the state of the housing market, where to make the interventions and 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 what kind of products to put into in into the investment in 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 housing. So those those elements, I think, are are particularly important. Clearly, Covid has had an impact. There's been some resetting of the base times in which housing housing can be delivered. And work has been done to ensure we we minimise any 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 delays. And and also the opportunity to use the company to also help with the delivery of our HRA objectives as well, which helps with overhead costs and also to drive that part of our housing ambitions. On page nine and paragraph twenty nine, there's some more thinking around governance, which is to establish a member officer shareholder panel set up to oversee the performance of this new wholly owned company, Norwich City Services Limited. And that remit should also take the opportunity to be expanded to cover NRL. So that, I think, is another level of of scrutiny, oversight and engagement. And that panel will involve senior councillors, including the leader of the council and relevant court failure holders. Involvement of the chief executive and relevant executive directors. So actually, there is a going forward, much more much more additional support and robustness in in the work of 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 the company. And so in conclusion, and of course, there's a below the line report with the details of the business plan, which are commercially confidential. But the the key figures and the key trends are in this report and they move in an extremely positive direction. There's a whole series of non financial benefits that we must remind ourselves on as we go ahead. There's new, good quality, sustainable housing. There is, you know, it 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 means that the housing we're developing on the on the rest of the site. You know, it will be of added value, the value of 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 those properties, but also the the value of of the land. And that enables the company to continue to, you know, pay back the loans and the equity that we put in and also pay a dividend to the council. And in in that part of the city, it's an economic boost to the Bothor area, as well as some of the impressive environmental standards that are integral to to this investment as well. And I just take this opportunity to thank two of our cabinet colleagues, Mike Stonard, who has who has cheered the board, cheering the board and 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 councillor Paul Kendrick. From all the work that they've done from the inception of this this company and the success at the sustainable position that the company has moved into with ambitious targets going forward to meet housing need and improve the general environmental standards and the general economy of of that part of the city and beyond. With those introductory remarks, I'll open it up to any any cabinet colleagues who would like to make a comment.
Leader, I wonder if I could come in before colleagues around the cabinet table?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. It's just a procedural point. I I noticed that councillors Kendrick and Stonard declared an interest at the beginning of the meeting, which was quite right and proper. But as I've also advised other members that who who are directors on council owned companies, whilst they don't have a disposable pecuniary interest, they do have a personal interest which could conflict with their role as cabinet members, their primary duty being towards the company as a director. And so I would recommend for the for the sake of good governance, that perhaps our two directors on this item might wish to step outside the meeting.
Okay, if if you are still advising Geoff, then we.
I am. I'm happy to step outside. And as I leave, mention that Dave Shaw and Jose have worked tremendously hard and deserve our thanks and gratitude. As I leave the room, I'm saying that without making a comment one way or the other about the about the business plan.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mike. And Paul? You're you're muted at the moment.
Yes, I'm also very happy to leave the meeting. That was just said. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll say I'll say something about the 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 points I made about stakeholder and governance arrangements in a moment. But Graham, we heard your hand up.
I did chair just before you open it up for discussion. There was just a couple of points in the business plan in the in the covering report that I just thought it might be worth just to draw to people's attention because clearly, this is an annual process that we go through with N R L and the report, as you correctly pointed out, brings out the the steadily improving financial position, the strong sales that have been there from the company over the past year. I won't repeat any of that. But two of the features that I think are perhaps just worth bringing out by way of introduction is that in the recommendation to sort of welcome the business plan and the package of recommendation that's agreed, this is not at this stage committing any of the council finances to this process. That will come in due course, because what we're seeking to do is to move forward in accordance with the business plan. But more detailed business cases will need to be brought forward over the course of the year in relation to the individual development proposals that you've mentioned. So this is just giving the comfort, the welcoming the business plan, giving the com- the company confidence to move forward with those things. But there is further due process and a great deal more work needs to be done for the council to satisfy itself as shareholder of the company that it ought to invest in those future development proposals that you've referred to. And I think the other point to draw out in terms of the recommendation is that before we get into that position of approving the detailed business cases for the individual developments, we're also proposing that the council obtain sort of further independent expert advice and scrutiny to build in that additional layer of assurance about that potential investment in these further developments that may yet come to you in due course. So I think those are the two other aspects of the report that are just worth sort of drawing out by way of introduction.
Yep. And I'm I'm very pleased you've you've alluded to those because they are very important. And as you say, a very rigorous process of business case analysis will will need to be undertaken, particularly important in a very volatile climate. Okay, thank you for that. Any comments or questions from cabinet colleagues? Gail?
Thank you. Now, I I welcome the report and I I would just like to go back to the the housing which the H R A already has at Trinity Gardens and that the good standard and and the happy people in their homes at the moment. And I'd I take on board the the that we're going to get going to get some extra reassurance from an independent review of of the of the business cases. I would just plead that this is done in a timely manner so that we don't lose the impetus that we have with we're already amazing sales, I'd say, considering the times that we're in. So I hope that will be done in a timely manner. And 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 also just to remind people that we are getting interest from this company, which is helping to support our other needs on the council. It's quite considerable amount of interest each year. So that that helps us to protect frontline services. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other any other officer comment this stage? Yes, Kevin?
Thanks, Alan. Just very quickly, you know, I feel it's worth marking that this is one more example of what a joined up administration we are, both joined up at cabinet level and very much joined up at officer level. And it's not very helpful identifying a particular aspect and saying we need a policy on this, when actually we see how integrated are the policies across and something like this, while it is a physical manifestation, it achieves all our ambitions from an environmental point of view, from a social point of view, from an economic point of view. And I I I think it is just worth double underlining how well what we do serves across the piece.
Thanks very much, Kevin. Well made point. Jamie, any questions from you?
Yes, these obviously, we talked about about the level of scrutiny that's important for this and for the ongoing success of Norwich Regeneration Limited. And Alan, you've mentioned mentioned the stakeholder board and that senior councillors will be on that. It seems that from what you've said, that it will be senior councillors from the administration. Is there an opportunity also to have opposition councillors on there to provide that scrutiny?
And I I think my my thinking on this, and I'd spoken to your colleague councillor Burgeline a little while back, I think it would be particularly important to have one one senior member of the of the main opposition party as part of that. And I would ideally would like the the leader of of that group, given that I will or whoever is leader in in the next civic year will be be part of that body, I think, at the leader leader level, I think that would be an important and useful useful addition. So that's that's my thinking at the present time. And that also, since you since you hopefully just picked that point up, Jamie, I was kind of I was kind of anticipating it. I think it's 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 explicit in here that actually portfolio holders who have a a a stake, as it were, in 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 the work of N R L, literally need to be stakeholders going forward as things have evolved rather than on the board. Because I I'm sure it is a frustration to, you know, councillor Stonard and Kendrick that they're not able to be in the room for something that they've they've given, you know, significant amounts of their time and their energy and their commitment to. So I was going forward, I I think we would have the relevant portfolio holders sitting on the stakeholder group. And that if we were looking for representation from among the administration councillors, that would be a non executive member of the administration who would represent maybe one, maybe two and represents the the council on on the board in that role. So we don't have that conflict of interest. So those will be things for the new for the new civic year and will come into to place once once we are directly into the new civic year. Right. Any other any other questions or or comments on the report? Right, okay. So we we're going to go on to the below the line report presently, not not just yet. But are we able to accept the recommendations which are listed on page three of the supplementary agenda? Yeah. Okay, thanks very much. So now I'll get myself back into the right order. And we'll take item item nine, which is on page seventy three of the the main agenda. And that is in Gail's name. And that's about a contract award for kitchens and bathroom upgrade programme for council dwellings.
And I think John's just entered the room, so that's good. For for what is such a small concise report, we're talking about a considerable investment in our housing stock. This report is to award a contract for the upgrading of kitchens and bathrooms to a value of ten million four hundred and forty six thousand two hundred and fifteen pounds over three years to Gasway Services Limited. The Eastern Procurement Framework Limited was used to invite bids through a mini competition on three years of possible work. This enabled those bidding to take into account the potential savings from higher volume orders with suppliers. And in these somewhat difficult times and challenging times, provided security of workloads and security to the workforce. The recommendation is to award the contract to Gasway Services Limited as a one year plus one year plus one year term. Orders will be placed annually based upon satisfactory and agreed quality and programme delivery. This is really important to us. The budget of three million seven hundred and twenty thousand for the year twenty one twenty two is already within the approved H R A capital programme. And it's really rather pleasing that is a this is a local contractor and will provide much needed employment for Norwich. So back to the recommendation to award the contract. I don't know if John has anything else to add.
No, councillor Harris, I think you've covered it. Thank you.
Right, any any questions? This is a this is a great a great story, actually, really transformative for people in terms of their domestic dwellings. Any any other questions? Members, Jamie, anything from you on this one?
Yeah, apologies if this has been discussed before, but what happens to the old kitchens and the old bathrooms? All the appliances, what happens to them?
Yeah, well, generally, they're in poor condition and they would be disposed of. However, there is a recycle programme that the contractor puts most of the old carcases, et cetera, into the recycle and it is chipped up and broken up and and recycled into other products.
Okay, would it be possible to have details of that?
Yes, we can ask for the details of that, absolutely. Generally, on the contracts, there is some mention around the recycling element, but we can certainly get some more detail on that for you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, and I think it would be 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 useful also if the portfolio holder also has had sight of that as well. Okay, so can we accept the recommendations? Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. Excellent. So let's go on to item ten, page eighty one, short, but again, important report. This relates to the contract to replace the seating in the halls. And the contract has been awarded after competitive process to Hussey Seatway Limited. And it's financed by the our successful towns deal. And there was a an allocation, an additional allocation made to us of roughly a million pounds, part of an accelerator process. And some money from the 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 capital programme. I think this is a particularly interesting report, reminding ourselves that the halls historically is the largest remaining intact freely complex in the United Kingdom. If you didn't know that, you do know. And the city council has held this asset for six hundred years since since the Reformation, which was a fairly turbulent time. But it's actually been a central to the cultural life of the city. And actually, this is a really effective way of smartening up and modernising this venue, new seating and new lighting. And actually, the seating, it will provide a better customer experience. And actually, it's remarkable, and maybe Mike, who's who's joined us will just tell us a little bit about these remarkable seats and and how how effective they are in terms of moving them around. So I think, you know, the last the last time we had anything around new seating was in the in the nineteen nineteen seventies. And and the key point is it makes it a more creative and flexible space. So, you know, this is a this is a significant community asset, which, you know, in terms of its interior features with the with this investment and other investment is really going to help us deliver what it says in the in the objectives, you know, an inclusive inclusive city. So this is a this is a very, very good, good news story. Nikki, any anything you wanted to add? And then Mike, if he's got any points he wants to make?
Sorry, I'm just coming off on mute. Sorry about that. I think two things for us, I think, and Mike will probably expand just slightly on this. It makes a huge difference to how comfortable people are in the halls, but it also makes a huge difference to how we can do the get outs and get ins of people using using the hall. So Mike, you gave me an amazing statistic, I think, on how quickly you could put out so many chairs compared to how quickly you put them out now. So you might want to share that.
Yeah, thank you, Leader. Nikki, yes, this is obviously for us, it's a really exciting project. The the seating in the halls is one of its biggest downs since the present. So yes, the new seating would be the new retractable tiered seating, which we refer to the West Gallery at the back. Currently, that takes about two people an hour to set up, whereas the new one will take about five minutes. It'll be comfortable, it'll be modern. The new arena seating, which takes us again several hours to set up, you can set up eighty chairs in apparently three minutes, which is a huge difference in time. So that would obviously allow us to bring more events to the hall by having less setup times and obviously help increase some income into the halls. And as the lead has referred to, a better customer experience because there'll be comfy, modern chairs that reflects the atmosphere that's inside the building, which is obviously fantastic when it is full and it's allowed to be full. It's a really memorable experience and it's really helped that.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Mike. I mean, that is that is transformative. Makes it a less backbreaking experience if people have to move the furniture around. Any any other comments from cabinet members on this piece of extremely good news? Karen?
I'm really curious about what these look like and how and how they work. They can be set up so quickly. And I take it they're not fixed, so they can be moved into different positions. So if you have people who need, you know, wheelchair access or something, they they can be moved around. They're not like big fixed units.
No, the only the yes, they can be moved around. The reason they're faster, Karen, is Mike probably knows more about this than me is because the way we have to fix the chairs now, because if you think about the chairs and the main chairs in the halls, they are basically banqueting chairs. They're not chairs for a flexible arena where you can do concerts, you know, the chairs that the team have to fix together, tie together, move into place. So there will be movable chairs in the main body of the hall. And we've always had the retractable seating, but the retractable seating at the back is mostly put away when we we do it. So it will make it even more flexible than it is now.
Okay.
Okay, very, very good. And actually, before Jamie asked a question, all the chairs that are going to be surplus to requirements, are they going to find a a new home somewhere?
Yeah, absolutely. So Mike and his team are really keen on reuse and recycling for things. So I think we've given things away where we've sort of recycled things, haven't we, Mike? But with the chairs, they will have a value. We just probably need to work out what is possible with the retractable seating because it it is from the nineteen seventies and it we wouldn't want to just give that to someone because it's it's not very easy or very safe to to pull out and in again. But I hope I'm not taking your name in vain, Mike, but it's one of your your key passions.
Mike, did you want to say something?
Oh, sorry. Yes, I'll say the 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 bank, you know, we, as Nikki's alluded to, we recently replaced some of our tables. So that went on the Lumi site to be offered out to sort of community groups and things like that. community groups and things like that. The main body of the chairs will look to either offer or sell on to people. But like, again, Nikki's alluded to, the retractable unit is beyond serviceable repair. So obviously, a great deal of it will be recycled through the metal, you know, through metal recycling as much as possible.
Thanks, Mike. Jamie, Jamie, any questions on this?
No, my question's already been, been answered there. Thank you.
Well, there we are. Okay, good. And, and obviously to your satisfaction. So that's very good as well. Right, shall we just take the, the recommendation? I think I'm sure we're all happy with that. Great, thank you very much. So item eleven is the exclusion of the public. So do we need to vote on that at all? Lucy, did you want that? Yes. So can we vote to exclude the public? Not that we want to, but commercial sensitivity and so on. Try and keep our green papers to a minimum. Okay, that's passed. So we, we now need to come out of this, this zone code and enter another. Can I just ask Stuart, how long do you, how long do we need to, how long do you need before we come back in?
About five minutes, I think should, should do it. So if people, the, the people will go into the waiting room as soon as I'm there and then obviously I'll start letting people in, so.
Okay, five minutes then. Right, see everybody in a few minutes.